Good evening. Call to order, the Revere City Council meeting of Monday, December 11, 2017. We'll all stand and salute the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito is absent, Councillor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers. Here, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Councillor Vice President Keith.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 4, 2017.
So move.
Calendar item number three, this is a, actually, we got kids out here. Calendar item number four, motion presented by Councillor Guanasso that the City Council award certificates of appreciation to the Papua Warner Squad B football team for winning the Greater Boston League Division Championship, the Eastern Massachusetts Championship, and
Squad B.
So we're going to have, Councillor Guanasso is going to introduce some of the members here and present their certification. Councillor Guanasso?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Over the past fall, I've had the pleasure of keeping up with the Squad B's great effort to become champions of this state and this Commonwealth. And so, it was a little bit heartbreaking to see them lose their final game, but the recognition that each member of this Squad B team presented to each and every one of us as citizens of this community is nothing but pride. They were dedicated to the effort of winning. They were a team that came together for one common goal, and that was to win. They listened to their coaches and they did what they were told. Every player to the person deserves all this recognition because they really are true champions. I watched and listened to, on a daily basis, when I was out there campaigning, quite a few of the players would come by, and I got to know them. And to say the least, these are fine young men that represent our community. They all have great personalities, they know how to win, and I just love talking with them. I'm thankful that the campaign is over because actually it's too cold to be out there, but these kids made it so nice and enjoyable when they came by to offer their hellos and hi and hoi. They didn't know me from Adam. They just knew that I was AJ's somewhat uncle or something, you know, so they figured that they knew me. But anyway, it was a great honor and a real privilege to know each and every one of them, and now this recognition is the least we can do to show our community that this is what we have representing us in the future. And in this group, one day, might be my replacement, you never know. So, gentlemen, you did a great, great job, and obviously...[246.01][246.01](Applause). Obviously, the coaches and the parents had a lot to do with it, but the coaches dedicated to the person, they were really self, they just gave of themselves so easily, and what it shows is, these kids enjoyed it, and that's the most important thing. Getting our kids involved in some sort of activity to get them off the streets, let them enjoy one another, and be good friends, and show them that there are good clean-cut things out there to do and have fun doing it. So again, I'd like to offer out this certificate of appreciation that offers out by myself, the City Council, but all the people of Revere also offer this to you. I will read one, instead of reading them all, because they all say the same thing, and that, and I will assert the name. Revere Certificate of Appreciation in acknowledgment of your dedication to youth sports by leading Revere Papua Warner and Squad B to a 2017 Greater Boston League Division Championship, a 2000 Eastern Massachusetts Championship, and runner-up finish at the 2017 New England Super Bowl Championship Special Recognition is hereby accorded to Wayne Rose, Assistant Coach. This certificate of appreciation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens. This is 11th day of November in the year of our Lord 2017, and on the Independence of the United States of America 241st. Signed by Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, also signed by Patrick M. Keith, City Council Vice President, and offered by Councillor Guanasso. Wayne?[360.21][360.21](Applause). And here's an Italian name that I know how to pronounce, Bill Guanasso.[371.03][371.03](Applause). See you, Billy.
Good job, Charlie.
Now, we come to Miguel Colon.
Cologne.
Colon. Ah, I see.[383.21][383.21](Applause). Good job, good job.
Keith, try this one. Do you want me to help you?
I can do this.
Congratulations.
Next is Augusto Gonzalez.
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez. Augusto, where are you?
(Inaudible).
Brandon Solemy. Sammy.
High five.
Haley.
Haley.[408.12][408.12](Laughter). Sorry, where are you? Christian, not here? Noel Theodore. Noel?
(Applause).
Daniel Arago.
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 Anoir.
Enoir.
Enoir.
Marbo.
Marbo. Enoir Marbo. There we go, Enoir. Max Doucette.
Max.
Where are you, Max?
Yeah.
Hey, Max, you don't like pizza.
No.
Okay, we'll get your chicken wings next time. Mark Bakaze.
Mark Bakaze.
Mark, congratulations, Mark. Ricardo Goncalves. Ricardo. Guys are all bigger than me. Jordan Rodriguez.
Jordan Rodriguez.
Nicklaus Coughlin. Nicklaus. Carlos Rizzo.
Carlos Rizzo.
Juan Arave. Juan, good job.
Juan.
Orlando Jacino.
Orlando.
Jefferson Maria.
We're here.
Now, head coach, Reggie Green.
Reggie. Reggie. Reggie.
William Brinjepe.
William Brinjepe.
Another tough name, Andrew Guanasso. AJ. Keith Jones.
Yeah.
Alexander Lopez Acuna.
Alexander.
Alexander, good job.[500.82][500.82](Applause). Guess what? Orlando, you don't think I'd forget you, do you? Where are you, my man? Every day Orlando would say, every day. Big hug.
Yeah, Orlando.
Every day I'd see Orlando. From the Lincoln School. Adam Aguas.
Adam.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is your 2017 Champions.[512.82][512.82](Applause).
(Inaudible).
Hey, fellas, gentlemen, we have one more, well, we have two more pieces of recognition, one coming up right now, so you folks might want to sit tight on this next one, but if I can also just mention a word about the Revere Junior Patriots B Squad this year. I was also, I'm part of the organization as the president, and a lot of things that people don't realize about these kids is, they start August 1, working out in the 95, 100-degree heat, for a full month, five weeks before they play one game. So there's a lot of work that goes into it, to have them play into December, it's a tremendous accomplishment, and to have them play so well for that long, it's even more a greater accomplishment. So, very proud of what the boys did this year, and I hope that they take that on and the learnings that they got as being disciplined men and women on the field, and take that into other parts of their life. So, congratulations again, thank you.[794.62][794.62](Applause).
So calendar item number three, that the City Council will present Wayne Rose with a certificate of appreciation for starting Safe Saturdays for our youth.[811.62][811.62](Applause).
Councillor Rotundo, who presented this motion, is not here today, so I'll do the honor of presenting this to Wayne, but as you saw, he was just up here as a coach for the Revere Papua Warner B Squad, and he's also being recognized by the council for his, as a certificate of appreciation for the work he's doing in the community in helping to promote Safe Saturdays, which, if anyone doesn't know, is a program that's being, he's helping to run with private donations out of the Lincoln School on Saturday evenings to keep kids off the streets and to work and just do different things, whether it's dodgeball, or stick hockey, or basketball, or just hanging out in a safe area on a Saturday night, rather than hanging out on the street and doing god knows what, and probably things that we don't want the kids doing. So, I applaud him for that, and I'll read this certificate of appreciation and hand it to Wayne. In acknowledgment for your dedication to the youth of the City of Revere by founding youth program Safe Saturdays, special recognition is hereby accorded to Wayne Rose.[884.62][884.62](Applause). Wayne has elected not to take this time to make a speech.
Calendar item number five, that the City Council award a certificate of merit to Officer Mike Travado for saving the life of a young man who overdosed early Saturday morning, November 25, 2017.
Councillor Guanasso?
I got a visit from a very good friend of mine named Alan, who told me of a situation that was very, very upsetting and concerning to me. He told me of a situation whereas he had to administer Narcan to his grandson, and he said his efforts weren't working, and by the good faith of God, they called 911 and they received Officer Mike Travado to come to the aid. Officer Travado had to administer Narcan, not once, but twice, to try to revive this young man. Very, very pleased to say that the young man is alive and well and doing well, and he's done well, based on the fact that there's two very caring people took the time and effort to learn how to use Narcan to save his life. Now, I'm going to let Officer Travado tell you more about it, and I'll also ask Alan to say a few words, and he's the grandfather of this young boy. And to me, him having the knowledge and the know-how how to administer and have Narcan on his possession, having a little bit of a knowledge of the previously, that his grandson might be a user, he said, "Just, God forbid, in case I do need it, I want to train in it, and I want to get it in case I have to use it." And so be it, it happened, so the rest is history, and I offer it out to Officer Travado and Alan to share their experience with you. Before, after, and after that, I will read the merit of certificate of appreciation from the City Council and the citizens of Revere. Officer Travado?
Thank you, sir. I'm being recognized largely through the insistence of Alan Peckner, but I just have to bring to light that it's Mr. Peckner's clear head and quick thinking that administered the first dose of Narcan and then alerted the emergency response system to get me there in the first place, so I could give whatever help I was capable of giving. So, as much credit belongs to him for his grandson's well-being as it belongs to me. I'd also like to acknowledge Officer Anthony Delai Okono, who assisted me that day, and without him, my job would have been a lot tougher.
A day I'll never forget is November 25. I got a call at 2:00 in the morning, my grandson was out in his car, he was passed out in the car. I went out to the car, he had no pulse, he was ice cold. I gave him some Narcan, couldn't revive him. He started coming to a little bit, then we called 911. About 30 seconds later, there's a cruiser coming out up the street. Mike Travado jumps out of his cruiser. It was like an angel from heaven. I could not believe it. He pulled my grandson out of the car, administered Narcan, started giving him CPR. He started coming to. When I first saw my grandson, I knew he was dead and that we probably would not, he would probably not come back to life. We brought him back to life. He was out in the ambulance for probably 20 minutes to a half an hour. The ambulance couldn't leave, and I kept on saying, "Just drive him to the hospital." They kept on telling me, "If we drive him to the hospital, he may not make it." Finally, I don't know how long it was, we get him to the hospital. He was in the emergency ward for probably about an hour, the doctor comes out, and we didn't think he was going to make it in the hospital. Doctor comes out again and told me that it was on the scene that actually saved his life, the Narcan and the CPR by the police officer that gave it to him. I cannot thank Mike Travado enough.
That's another reason why we all have to fight this addiction. We had a council meeting last week whereas the people from Revere Street that operate SUDI, and they came forward to tell us some of the information and how the office works somewhat. We have an epidemic out there, and unfortunately, it's not bad people that are users, it's good people that are users, they just fall victims to the wrong thing. And so, our conservative effort starts right at home, and so each and every one of us can be mindful of the fact that, learn from this experience, and I'm so grateful for Alan to come forward with Mike, to give this and offer this out to you, so there is hope. There is hope for people, once they become addicted, that maybe through the efforts of their family and friends and the system, maybe we can help them. You know, we have to do something, we just can't say it's his problem, it's her problem, this kid was not good when he was growing up, this girl wasn't doing. That's not the kind of conversation that has to take place in society today. We have to all rise above the occasion, and we all have to put our hands in effort to help, to beat this problem. And I think we're doing a great thing, and we have conjunction here with a citizen and a police officer, working to save a life. What better thing than that? It's a great thing. So I offer this out. The Revere, City of Revere Certificate of Merit. In acknowledgment of X and R distinguished and meritorious contributions and commitment, special recognition is hereby accorded to Officer Michael Travado, Revere Police Department. Your exemplary efforts to save the life of an individual who had overdosed during the early morning hours of November 25, 2017, will forever be remembered by this individual. Your service to the community is unwavering and greatly appreciated. In witness thereof, this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed upon by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens. This 11th day of December in the year of our Lord 2017, and the Independence of the United States of America 241st. Offered by a vote of the Revere City Council. Signed by Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, Patrick M. Keith, City Council Vice President, offered out by Councillor Arthur Guanasso. Congratulations.[1389.36][1389.36](Applause).
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Patrick, good work.[1392.36][1392.36](Applause).
Good job, Mike, good job.
Oh, thanks again. Oh, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, the Legislative Affairs Committee met this evening. We had two items on the agenda. One was an ordinance prohibiting non-medical marijuana establishments. That was voted out favorably by the committee. We'll be looking for a vote on that tonight. We also had an ordinance amending the shade tree ordinances in the City of Revere that was also voted out favorably, and we'll be looking for a vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other councils wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Which item did you want, which ordinance would you like to take up first?
17-389, please. Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. On engrossment and ordainment. Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance amending the shade tree ordinances of the City of Revere? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito is absent, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. On engrossment and ordainment. Roll call, please.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance prohibiting non-medical marijuana establishments within the City of Revere? Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito is absent, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo is absent, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Councillor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Madam Clerk, I was pointing personal privilege, I just wanted to mention, Councillor Rotundo was unable to be here tonight, he fell ill, and Councillor Morabito had a previously scheduled trip that was scheduled before the council meeting, so he was, yeah, he's missed only due to the fact that he was able to plan something before I did. And I also wanted to point out and mention that newly appointed representative on the Disabilities Commission, Robert Bent, is in attendance tonight.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of NCCL Enterprises, 27 Water Street, Wakefield, Mass., as a licensed drain layer.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Guanasso?
Mr. Vice President, to receive communication from the city clerk in reference to NCCL Enterprises, is there anyone there from, here from NCCL? No one here, intended. I ask a, this is a special request, that this be offered out prior to, in coming before the appointment subcommittee. If there's any objections, absolutely, we can hold this over, but at this time, I offer this out, that we vote favorably on it this evening.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Motion to approve?
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councillor McKenna that the mayor arranged to have an air quality test performed at City Hall.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, I put this motion in because my concerns are that a lot of people in this, in City Hall that work here, they all have coughs, and I believe that this is a sick building. I know it's not the mayor's fault that this was inherited, all these problems were inherited when he came into office, but we do need a fix now. The air quality was tested two years ago, after, two and a half years ago after the tornado, but the air quality has not been tested since. I don't even know when the air vents have been cleaned in everybody's office. So, when it rains, it rains, it leaks in the roof, as we can all see in the chambers office. We have plaster that falls down on Councillor Janino every council meeting. Leaks are in the chambers, in the auditorium, so we really do need to have the air quality tested, and so we can have everybody safe. So, that's my motion.
Thank you, Councillor McKenna. Councillor Guanasso?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I said this before publicly, but I'll say it again, for it's worth repeating, there's no question in my mind that there's something airborne within this City, City Hall, especially downstairs in the water area in that first level. My son contacted Legion Elige.
My son contacted Legionella disease, which is a form of Legionnaires' disease, which is a deadly disease. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is now going to inquire more of this building. As recently as Friday evening, my son was contacted by the Commonwealth of Mass in reference again to this building, to which I think in the very near future, they're going to do something about it, but I'm not sure. This motion obviously is very helpful in that endeavor. But, there's also an individual who works alongside of my son down there, who's been sick for months, who's lost drastic amount of weight. He's just not the type of individual who'll bring it to the line. He'll bring it for, in fact, he's probably going to get mad that I'm even saying this. But something has got to be done there. This young man is very, very sick. He's experiencing months and months of going through this. And it's definitely something that's airborne down. Few of the other people are experiencing great illnesses. And they attribute it to every other different thing. I attribute it to the contamination that lives within this building. I honestly believe there's no question in the world that mass water went through the walls after the tornado. I mean, this building has been experiencing this type of atmosphere for years. This is a buildup of mold. This is a buildup of something that's contaminated in this building. And what it does is it doesn't work the same thing on everybody. Because everybody's body is different in terms of fighting off these types of illnesses. Some people have a very high immune to this type of thing and some people very low. So, the air quality in this building's got to be controlled. It's got to be monitored. It's got to be, you know, just to prevent anybody from experiencing any of these illnesses. Now, my son had an illness prior to that. I'm not blaming anything on that. But his immune system was already at a low. So, he would be the first target to receive this airborne, whatever it is. I'm not a doctor. I don't profess to be one. But I know one thing. When I see sickly people around and it's all from the same type of, same type of thing, diarrhea, vomiting, all the time, loss of weight, tremendous, I mean, these are signals that something's going on here. So, it's mindful, and I'm very thankful for Counselor McKenna for bringing this to the forefront. I know last Monday night, several of us went out to eat and it was on the minds of other people too, about what's going on at City Hall? Why are people getting sick? I didn't instigate anything. I didn't bring up the conversation. I just happened to walk over and that's what the conversation was taking place. So, we have to, as watchdogs for the community, we also have to take care of, safeguard the health of our workers at City Hall. And so, if there is something wrong going on here in terms of the health issues, we've got to address that. And the mayor has been more than cooperative during my son's process. He's very, very willing to listen to anything and do anything that has to be done. He inherited this building. He didn't create this problem. So, and it's long before the recent administrations, I'm talking two, three, four, this contamination's been here for a while. It's just we don't get it because we're here on a very temporary basis. But those folks that stay here eight hours or plus a day, they're the ones that are going to get it. And when their immune system's down, they're going to experience some nasty illnesses and could be life-threatening, such as Legionnaires' disease and Legionella, which is very, very deadly. It's, you know, so, I compliment Counselor McKenna for bringing this to the forefront and I ask that we get these tests done as soon as possible for the safety of all the workers at City Hall. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I think this is an excellent motion. I think it's long overdue. I think the time for patience and delay has come and gone. It's time for this administration to act on this and to act boldly and get it done. I think to do less is inviting shame. We have so many people that pass through this building every day. Not only the people that work here, but the, I'll call them the taxpayers and the customers and the citizens of this city that come up here for various situations. And I'm not casting blame on the current mayor or the mayor prior to him. It's something that happened. I know there was a question with waiting for insurance settlements, et cetera, et cetera. And I think what has to happen is January 1, someone has to come into this building, do whatever testing is required. And if necessary, I know the mayor is talking, submitted a capital improvement project. If this needs to be added to it, let's do it. Let's not sit here and subject the citizens and the workers in this building to ill health and subject the citizens of this city to possible litigation down the road because this city council and this administration, our prior administration feel to act on this. So, I think it's very important that we move in that direction. And once again, I want to commend Counselor McKenna for bringing this to our attention. All one has to do is walk through the old auditorium and back and look at the ceiling and they'll understand what's going on in this building. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a great motion. I'd like to make sure that, you know, we're talking air quality. I think we need every test that's available, mold, any kind of test that can be done. Because I think it's, I think it's long before the tornado. This building has had problems for many years and it's, you know, it's like our infrastructure in the city. It's deteriorated and it's left unchecked. And so, there's some serious problems here and we need to test for mold and asbestos and every other kind of thing that, any kind of spores that can be going through the air here. And there's hundreds of them. So, it's not just a simple test. It's got to be a serious endeavor and it needs to be done right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Motion to approve?
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor's office and/or inspectional services distribute information on pest control ordinances and city bylaws to help in combating current rodent and pest issues throughout the city.
Any counselors? Someone from the audience?
Yes, sir. Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I think this is a great motion. I commend you, Counselor Keefe, for putting it forward. I just have a question. If you could just enlighten myself and those at home, what does the city currently offer in terms of pest control? I've heard that we've offered one free trap per household. Could you elaborate on that?
I'm not quite sure of the traps. I know that the city, upon requests, if there's an issue in the neighborhood or an issue with a property, they will come and do a baiting one time and that's typically what they'll do. Recently, the council and the mayor increased the amount of funds that go towards the baiting from $60,000 a year to $180,000 a year to help with the rodent issue. But as we both know, that it doesn't seem to be going away any time quickly. And much like, I'm sure like yourself and my fellow counselors, throughout the campaign season, it was something that certainly was brought to our attention many, many times. And actually, one of my, one of the residents and a neighbor of mine had suggested this to me, to where they could, where we could send more information out to new neighbors in the, on the streets so that they know how to help control the rodent issue and what steps they could take, but also what the city bylaws were. One being the trash ordinance that, you know, as we all know, you're either supposed to have the mint bags or a covered trash barrel, which either one isn't always followed or two, sometimes it's tough to really control. But I think that this information being sent out will give more of the new residents and people that maybe just aren't as, paying as close attention to the issues, give them some better information on how to take care of their property a little bit better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, point of affirmation.
Counsel Powers?
There are several things that are happening. First of all, we are, if we find out there's a strong infestation in a neighborhood, they will get A1 in here and they'll do everything they can to address that. They do offer a trap if someone comes up to the City Hall. But I think the main thing here is to have the inspectors, and I know they do this, but maybe we need more help there, to go into these neighborhoods, make sure that the trash barrels are covered, as they should be, make sure that people are not just throwing stuff into trash bags and leaving it on the side of the house. And I would monitor too, a lot of the homes where there are absentee landlords, the three, four, six family homes. And I've seen this throughout the city in many areas and if we, if we start hitting them in their parka book, maybe they'll get the message and provide the adequate barrels and the adequate rodent-free trash bags and things like that to make sure that we're doing something to abate that situation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers and Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a point that we just passed an ordinance as far as the bird feeding. And I actually did get a call from a resident of Ward 6 that has heard us discussing that we passed this ordinance and that we, she wanted to know what the status was because she has a similar problem in her neighborhood with the pigeons, feeding the pigeons. So, I had the madam clerk, she didn't want the person to be punished. We did settle on notifying the residents before we started punishing, punishing the people and fining them. So, had madam clerk sent an email to the inspection services, the mayor's office, that we put out that notification and so that the inspection services can start enforcing the ordinance. Thank you. And by the way, that's a great motion you put in there.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. I mean, your new ordinance that was put forth is, this is precisely why I think that we need to send out more communications in many different forms. It doesn't, you know, maybe it's from time to time when we send out a tax bill, we can also include a pamphlet in there on updated ordinances throughout the city. Or maybe there's public service announcements on the television and/or in the local newspapers. But your bird feeding, feeding the wildlife ordinance that we just put through, most new residents or most residents that don't pay close attention aren't going to know that unless we somehow educate them. So, this is just to help let the public know how to help take care of their neighborhood because we do have an issue and it needs to continue to be addressed in order for it to get any better. Anyone else? Oh, Counsel Guanasso?
Just so happens, prior to coming to the council meeting this evening, I watched the 4 o'clock news on Channel 7. And they have a situation occurring down in Falmouth where this lady has been accused of feeding some sort of, she says she feeds squirrels, but in fact, they showed and the neighbors showed the rodents going there. It was like unbelievable. And now, if they had something in place like the laws we just enacted, the police would have something to work on. But obviously, down in Falmouth, they don't have that. Because people, you know, weren't doing these type of things before. Either that or it wasn't attracting rodents. But you should have seen, the film that I saw, it was scary, the rodent, the rats just going to this location where the lady was feeding them. And she said that she wasn't doing it, but they have evidence that she was. And obviously, there's a whole colony of them going there. And it's frightening. So, again, Revere is to the forefront in protecting its residents and coming forward with nice ordinances to protect the neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Motion to approve? And that wraps up our meeting. Everyone have a great night. Next meeting will be December 18th, 2017. Thank you.